Good evening and welcome to the February 17, 2025, meeting of the City of Tuscaloosa Planning and Zoning Commission. This meeting allows for alternative participation in order to accommodate all citizens. Any written comments sent to staff are forwarded to the commission directly. At this time, I'd like to introduce our staff. We have Jimbo Woodson, Deputy City Attorney, Michael Garner, City Engineer, Zach Pons, Director of Planning, Leota Coyne, Planner, and Lilly McIntyre, Special Projects Coordinator. There are nine members of the Planning Commission, all appointed by the mayor for staggered terms, with the exception of the City Council Representative, who is appointed by the City Council. I ask commission members to introduce themselves and state their occupation, starting with Mr. Rumsey.
Steven Rumsey, Business Owner.
Dana Prince, Attorney.
John Smith, Deputy Director of Environmental Services.
Tim Harrison, General Contractor.
Ann Hornsby, Attorney.
Councilwoman Raven Howard, District Two.
Eddie Pugh, Retired.
Bill Wright, Business Owner. There were sign-up sheets located outside for public comment. Four speakers are allowed to speak in favor of a petition, and four are allowed to speak in opposition of a petition. All speakers will have the maximum of five minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. Tonight's procedures, the commission will receive, will take up the items in the order of the final agenda. The commission will initially receive a presentation from the staff as to the details of the agenda item. Additionally, we may hear certain matters involving the same property, such as an annexation and a zoning matter concurrently, although we will take separate votes on each matter involving the same property. After the staff presentation, we'll then call upon the petitioner to present their case. The petitioner will have a maximum of 10 minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. At the conclusion of the petition's remarks, we'll then call upon any other party in order of sign up who desires to support the petition, and thereafter, we'll call in order of sign up those who oppose the petition. When it's your turn for comment, please introduce yourself, stating your name and address to the commission into the microphone. At the conclusion of the, well, sorry about that, at receiving the remarks of those who oppose the petition, the petitioner will have the opportunity to respond to the, those, to the commission, to those objections that were brought up. Any rebuttal will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. The petitioner, if the petitioner presents any new information in response to the objections, we will allow those who oppose the opportunity to respond to the new information only. Any response will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. During the course of the presentation, you may be interrupted by any member of the commission for clarification or additional information. Such interruptions will not reduce your time. Once the commission members have, are satisfied they have received all relevant information, I will then close for further discussion by the public, at which time, the commission members will discuss the matter and then vote. After the vote, you are free to leave. These proceedings are being recorded and broadcast live. All in-public, public comments should be made at the podium into the microphone. Again, please first state your name and address for the record. Jurisdiction. In all matters pertaining to subdivision regulations, approval of subdivisions within the city and outside the city limits, and outside the city limits within the city's planning jurisdiction, developments with a special district and approval letters for developments in historic buffer zones, this commission serves as the final authority. As to all remaining agenda matters, including annexations, rezonings, planned developments, and street vacations, this commission serves as a recommending body to the City Council. In that regard, our decisions are in the form of a recommendation to be presented to the City Council, and the City Council will make the final decisions on those matters. Subdivision approvals require the affirmative vote of six members of the Planning Commission. All matters which are recommendations to the City Council require a majority vote for an affirmative recommendation. At this time, I would ask, do any members of the commission have any conflicts, adventures before us tonight? If so, please state for the record. I would ask the staff to confirm on the record that proper notice has been given to all parties in interest as required by law as to all matters before the commission tonight.
It has.
Okay. All right. I would ask that we will begin with the approval of the minutes, as the Planning and Zoning Commission has received a synopsis of the January 2024 meeting, actually, January 2025 meeting. I move that we dispense with a reading of the minutes of the same unless there are any deletions, additions, or corrections. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minus approved.
Good evening, Commission. We're starting off tonight with the consent agenda. We have three cases here, S-1825, S-1925, and S-2025. We did not have anyone sign up on the sign-in sheets. Do you have any questions for staff?
Anyone in the audience care to speak for, or any comments on the consent agenda items? Have you heard none? Commission, for agenda items, the three items, S-1825, S-1925, S-2025. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, moving on, we have one case requesting to withdraw tonight. That is S-8524. This has been withdrawn prior to mailing, so no vote is needed. Moving into our cases requesting to continue, we have companion case residences at Rice Valley. That was also continued prior to mailings. No vote is needed. We next up have companion case Cedar Forest. We have the petitioner here to request that continuance.
Petitioner.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, I'm Mike McGuire with GSA. We've been working with the neighbors, and I think we're pretty much hopefully got something that everybody's gonna, gonna like. We have not finished drawing all our, doing all our drafting, so we asked for another month to be continued, but feel like we'll be ready next month. We will be ready next month.
Right. Commission, we have a continuous request for GPD 0425 Cedar Forest. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right. Next up, we've got four cases. Mr. Jimmy Duncan is here to represent those four to ask to continue.
Good evening, Commission. Jimmy Duncan with Duncan Coker Associates, 201 Town Center Boulevard, Tuscaloosa. We're, as Zach said, we're asking for these four cases to be continued until next month. It's gonna be S-2425, 2325, 2225, and 2125.
Commission, on the continuous request for S-2125, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Request for S-2225, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. S-2325, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. S-2425, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you.
All right, Commission, moving into unfinished business, we have companion case Brixton. This is annexation 0125, GPD 0125, and PS 0125. Starting with the annexation, you can see we're north of the river here, next to the towns. You can see that property today is vacant, and that is the area to be annexed there in that diagonal red stripe. The petition, they are requesting to annex into city limits for a new residential subdivision. In our 2021 framework conference of plan, this was identified as a primary expansion area, and there are no concerns from staff regarding this annexation. Moving into GPD 0125, this is a rezoning from SFR1 to GPD for a general plan development. This will be 144 single-family lots and seven open space lots. I can see today that property is in the county and the police jurisdiction. I can see it's surrounded by other general plan developments, neighborhood commercial and general commercial. The petition is to rezone from SFR1 to GPD for that development of a new residential subdivision. I can see that overall site plan here. Moving into that GPD narrative, again, this is 57 acres. They're proposing 144 single-family lots. There'll be 60-foot width lots, as well as half-acre estate lots, for a total density of 2.5 dwelling units per acre. There'll also be some natural areas preserved and some recreation opportunities. They'll have architectural guidelines, and they're in the sale price between 585,000 and 585,000. Moving into, just zooming in on the site plan here, you can see, starting north at Forest Oaks Lane, you can see those 60-foot lots, as well as some common area dog parks and some waterways. Moving south here, you can see additional buffering, as well as open space areas in continuation of those standard 60-foot lots. Moving towards the south, near Old Colony, you can see those estate lots on the right, and continuing with those open spaces in standard 60-foot lots. Here is the makeup of a 60-foot standard lot on the left and the estate standard lot on the right. Here's some example elevations from the packet, as well as floor plans. Just a few of these here, there are more included in the packet. Here's a sample streetscape from the packet, what the Old Colony access point will look like, and the entry point here. Lastly, moving into the subdivision, again, 144 single-family lots and seven open space lots. Keeps that plat with contours, without. We do have a variance request for cul-de-sac length and turnarounds. We received two public comments with concern regarding this project, as well as 190-plus signatures from neighboring property owners. The petitioner does have a presentation for you all, but do you have any questions for staff before that?
Mike, on the variance request for cul-de-sac length?
We don't have any issues with that request.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for staff? Call the petitioner. Petitioner.
Commission, again, Jimmy Duncan with Duncan Coker Associates, here tonight representing 68 Ventures. Bobby Isaacson from 68 Ventures is here with me tonight. If there are any questions that I can't answer, Bobby can, can chime in and help. We've got just a handful of slides we wanted to run through, just to kind of piggyback off of Leota's comments. So this is, this is very important. 144 lots total, 135 60-foot lots, nine half-acre lots. The, hence the change from last month, you probably remember me coming up here, we had a last-minute request from some builders to go to all 60-foot lots. So this package is all 60-foot lots, with the exception of the estate lots. Density's now 2.5 units per acre, and the open space is a massive 33% of the project area, right at 19 acres. I'm gonna just kind of cruise through this. So staff requested this, and I think this is very important as well, the sample street view. So you've got dozens of elevations and floor plans in your package, but this is kind of a, you know, a handful, two or three or four assembled from the, for a streetscape view, demonstrating, you know, what these side setbacks could look like, et cetera. Total of three of these. And so revision since the, the original submission, the density decreased, again, we started at 3.35 units per acre with this. The current proposal is 2.5 units per acre. The towns of North River, for comparison, is 3.06 units per acre, so we're significantly below that. The townhome component that was so controversial the first go-around has since been eliminated. Building materials, the hardy board option has also been eliminated. The covenants are requiring brick on the front and both sides, and these requirements, along with many others, are integrated in the architectural control standards. And then another point of contention, the home builder, D.R. Horton, has been ruled out as a home builder. One question that, that came up over this last review, and we wanted to spend a little bit of time being sure there was understanding on what we want to do here. So we had a very productive meeting with the towns back in the fall at Trinity Presbyterian one Thursday evening. The question continued to come up about the, the buffer along the town's common boundary. How is it gonna be managed? Who is gonna maintain it? And so we went back and forth as to whether or not to put that common area, designated as a common area lot. By doing that, it created a huge setback concern because the buffer was increased from 20 feet to 40 feet with this last iteration, so we doubled it. And as you can see, if we made that common area and then put a setback on top of it, the, the house footprint just gets tiny. And so what we've decided to do, and all of this is gonna be controlled, again, by the HOA documents, as far as how it's policed, you've got a 20-foot rear setback in maintenance easement. So within the 40-foot buffer, blue line is your 40-foot buffer, red line's the 20-foot rear setback in maintenance easement, there will be gates, I'm sorry, fence coincides with the, with the rear setback in the maintenance easement. So there's free passage through this area to maintain the vegetation that's up against that common property line. There were some concerns from the towns' residents about, you know, that evergreen screen that we're proposing, how, how is it gonna be maintained if there are fences back there, et cetera? So we think this is a practical solution to it. Again, it's gonna be governed by the HOA documents. No fences in the way in 20 feet, it's more than a practical distance. Any questions?
Have we seen anything like that? Mr. Woodson, is that a, you have any issues with this arrangement on the buffer and the maintenance area?
As long as spelled out.
Oh, Mr. Duncan, Brixton HOA is gonna maintain that buffer, that's what I'm...
That's correct.
I think we have a similar scenario around part of the periphery of High Grove, if I'm not mistaken.
Around what?
High Grove.
All okay with it. Any other questions for the petitioner?
But the lot owner will own the whole lot. The property line goes back to where, well, it's gone now. The property line will go right back to the, the town's property.
That's correct.
And then, and then it'll just be subject to an easement. Will the easement be on the plat, recorded, or what?
Both, Ms. Prince.
Mr. Duncan, show me the, the plan view of the neighborhood.
Any particular spot, Ms. Harrison?
I brought this up first, I brought it to Mike, but I still, the Yorkshire Lane connection right there, sound two different widths of road. How is that gonna work?
So I guess, first of all, while I'm getting this note, you know, we, we spent significant amount of time talking about this with the, with the town's representative, and unfortunately, we're back to the same spot that we were when we left this thing with y'all last year. Being that, there's a note on the town's final subdivision plat mandating that this gate come down, and that this through connection be made if and when Forest Oaks Lane is improved to county standards. So at the end of the day, we'll do it either way. We can do the bollard application like we've done at High Grove that no one wants, or we can take the gate down and make the connection. Now, one thing about that note on the plat, if we're taking it for face value, it says when Forest Oaks Lane is improved to county standards. By virtue of the fact that we don't own the property on the north side of Forest Oaks Lane, we can only dedicate our half to accommodate the half-street improvement. So what you're getting is a total of about 25 feet of paving, which is, does not meet county standards. But if we're taking the gate down, we're taking the gate down. I mean, Mr. Gardner's, is okay with it, we're taking the paving as far north as we can to do that, but, Mr. Harrison, to your point, that transition is gonna occur with a curve that marries those two pavement widths up right there.
You're, you're gonna transition, I guess, from a 40, is it 40-foot current?
No, so Yorkshire's gonna have 27 feet of paving, and we, we're gonna end up with right at 25. So I mean, you're, you're, what you're gonna see is gonna be a foot taper on either side of the road. I mean, there's not gonna be a drastic...
Mike, is there anything they can do, north side, the border there, or something? This, this, it look like it's unfinished.
I think an option might be some form of a ribbon curb to, to put along the edge of the paving. If you're familiar with a ribbon curb, it's a band of concrete that borders the asphalt, but it lets the water sheet flow. On the north side of the road, you know, it's all open ditch. So that is a mechanism that's used when you're, when you're working with drainage scenarios like that.
I, I just, I, I'd like, I don't know if you can solve it now, but I'd like for y'all to try to work something out with him and the LDP process, to try to do something on that north side of the road to make that look like it's been his product. I mean, it's just, it'll look like it's not been...
That's right.
Try to work together some of...
And I, I think, Mr. Gardner and I talked about this, I mean, you know, one thing that we can do is, obviously, safety's paramount in all this, we can stripe that road such that there's not a narrow westbound lane and a wide eastbound lane. So we can do a fair split of that paving width at the end of the day, so that it doesn't look lopsided in terms of whose side's what.
You're gonna have half the traffic of this subdivision potentially coming out of that road, just the offensive to make it look like...
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for petitioner?
Which cul-de-sac is the one that is noncompliant? And how's that?
Ms. Hornsby, let me go back. It's, it's the one on the left side of the screen there. It exceeds the 600-foot maximum distance.
Okay.
Any other questions for petitioner?
Thank you. Thank you.
Who we have? Mr. Chairman, had a couple people signed up, Mr. Jim Essery.
I'm Jim. I live at 5017 Yorkshire Lane. It's about four or five houses down from this road that you're talking about coming through into our neighborhood. We've never had but one exit out. We go out, go out, go out, okay? We don't, we're not interested whatsoever of being part of this and having that road. Put bollards up or something like that that will get it. I mean, I've, I've heard all kinds of things from, that we need this space for them to come through here. We don't want them in the neighborhood. I live in Yorkshire, it's, it's a round circle, and we don't need any people going through our neighborhood. There's two, there's two parks, just as you go through that gate, on the right and the left that the kids play. It's very dangerous, it's short, we've got a lot of people in that place, and we don't want it, period. We don't care what they do with the other side of the gate, we don't care. They're just talking about money, put bollards up. One of the arguments was, we need a fire, fire deal here. We ain't had a fire there. Can you, I don't even think we've ever had one in Yorkshire. So I don't care anything about the fireside, unless mine must catch on fire. And I've got insurance for that. I mean, that, that's, that don't make any sense to me. We're, we're against it all the way, and, and we don't care how, you wanna put, make a pig look good, we're not into that. We don't care anything, and we don't need anybody. We have walkers up there all the time, and we don't need, if you open that up, people from Yorkshire be coming out that gate and coming into our neighborhood in addition to what's there now. And it's supposed to be right now for, for our neighborhood to go out. I mean, that didn't, it absolutely makes no sense with the kids that we've got, with the parks that we've got, and the fact that you've got an ugly gate there now, and you just wanna come into our neighborhood after all this time. We don't have it, High Grove don't have an entrance in that, and we don't have an entrance into High Grove. Y'all didn't take care of that, or ever who, who does this didn't take care of that at the same time. We can't go into High Grove's neighborhood, we're blocked out. So I don't wanna go into their neighborhood now, the one you're trying to build, or they're trying to build, whoever it is. It doesn't make sense to, to me, anyway. But if you got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Staff only, in the documents of the towns, what was the language about that road there? And there was language in there, wasn't there, about if it was to ever develop to county standards, being Forest Oaks Lane?
So I don't know, I don't have the wording per se without looking at the plat directly, but it was clearly labeled on the subdivision plat, that Forest Oak Lane was to have connectivity when it was built, improved, and the note was on the final plat. And I think we're obligated to do that.
So do you understand that was on the original documents?
I understand that, and I also understand it would be improved if you just put bollards up there in case the fire department got there, they could hit it like that and come into our neighborhood. We don't want people in our neighborhood. But you're not improving me. You're not improving me to...
You think, you think these people are gonna come through your neighborhood?
I have no idea. I wanna take care, I don't want, why do I wanna find that out when the thing is built out and they coming through my neighborhood? That don't make sense to me either. I mean, they're not gonna improve anything with us. You're just gonna put a, you're just gonna put a, all you're gonna do is take the fence down and then turn, turn the cars loose. That, that's not improving...
Cars are turning loose? Explain that to me. What cars are we turning loose? Your car or their car?
You're gonna, well, the, the people in this neighborhood that they're trying to build...
What neighborhood? Their neighborhood, you're coming, right?
I'm in, I'm in Yorkshire, okay? Which is the towns.
I understand.
Okay? All you're gonna do is if guys wanna come through there, or kids wanna come through there and do all that playing and all that kind of stuff, they gonna come into our neighborhood? We don't care about that.
You don't think they can come in other, other entrances and do all that playing?
Well, it's a, it's a crappy gate that's there. I can tell you that right now.
I just, I, I don't understand, I, I don't see this neighborhood's traffic going into your neighborhood. I see your neighborhood using that road.
May, may do it, but we, we don't want them in there for the kids and say, we don't want our traffic coming in there and not going into the, up to the main, main thoroughfare.
I will say that the five minutes is a...
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next, Mr. Chairman, next person is Brian Robinson.
Hey, while he's coming up, Mike, it, the plat said if, if Forest Oaks Lane, is that it? Forest Oaks Lane, was developed to county standards. What, I'm, I'm unsure, I'm sorry, you need to review me, on what are county standards?
I would, I would submit that a, a road with a minimum of 24 feet of paving meets county standards, 'cause that's all over the county.
And they don't require, like, curb and gutter, or anything like that?
There, this developer is putting the curb and gutter on their side of the road in accordance with our half-street improvements.
Mr. Robson?
Good evening, Commission. I'm, I'm Brian Robinson. I live at 5129 Yorkshire Lane, and I'm the president of the HOA, but just on behalf, I just wanna voice, again, that same concern, not to be the dead dog, but just voice that same concern about the, about the opening of the gate into that Yorkshire section. But again, our concern is primarily the, the playground, the proximity to that, to that gate, and then, obviously, there are other playgrounds within the towns that are, you know, close to a road, so it's not being close to a road that's an issue, but that main thoroughfare through there, it's gonna create, by opening that gate, to me, presents an, an issue for the playground.
Where is the playground?
It's right inside, it's, right where the...
Right, right where, yup. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, sorry. But obviously, that presents an issue for us. Obviously, another concern was, you know, potential for increased property crimes and things, with just accessibility to the neighborhood. Again, again, High Grove has one entrance, obviously, it's a relatively new neighborhood. Obviously, the other, the issue was presented, obviously, when High Grove and the towns, we were in the towns at that time as well, obviously, it came to the agreement to put the bollard system up. It hasn't been an issue that I know of with a bollard system, and so, you know, I just wanna voice that concern. The town... The technicality, I guess, with the plat and the language on there, to be restricted until it's improved to county standards, that, my understanding is that the road, you know, and speaking to Jimmy, that it would not be, would not meet county standards, so to speak. Technically, I don't know that. I'm not an engineer. So, just, that's a question I had as well, was, you know, if we're going to appease the, I understand you guys approved the plat, you know, as it was, and obviously, it says it's to be restricted until it's improved to county standards. But, you know, does Forest Oaks Lane meet county standards as it's to be presented?
As it's being presented tonight?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it does.
Okay. And so, again, I guess that's one of the ways to concern, and we submitted the petition, you guys, you know, approximately 200 signatures. Again, those were just other people we were able to reach out to. Again, I think of all the 300, I think we had three that said they didn't wanna sign it, 'cause they wanted the gate to be opened. Again, we're gonna have a few in there that want it for accessibility, you know, want that easy going out. But again, our concern is more of a safety issue than anything, so.
Mr. Robinson, as a whole, though, would you agree or disagree that this developer seems to have tried to meet a lot of your requests?
Absolutely. And I appreciate Jimmy and Robert's efforts, and they, 100%, I mean, they've been transparent. We've worked through this and talked about it frequently. And so, again, they've, so our opposition is not to the development itself, but primarily the gate. So, again, for the petition that was sent, I think I put on the cover letter, again, those issues had been addressed, you know, with the exception of primarily the gate. And then the setback lines, and then we've, obviously, the setback lines, I think it's something certainly acceptable, what they presented it tonight, so. But again, our main issue is the gate at this point. Appreciate it.
Any questions? Anyone else care to speak for or against this petition request that did not sign up? Okay. Having heard none. Mr. Duncan, you have any additional comments you'd like to make? Nothing you heard? Okay, we'll close to public input. I think this project's come a long way from when we first saw it. I mean, a lot of improvements met, I think, to the neighbors' standards. I know the issue of the bollard. But I think we're following the rule of the plat that was written up for the towns, you know, that bring it to county standards, and that would allow that gate to come down. And I candidly think that, from a health and safety standpoint, it'd be nice to have a second entrance in there. I think we probably would rethink if we would put the bollards up between High Grove now. I think that was, we've kinda been over backwards to do that, and I think that really wasn't sticking with our standards going forward. So, I feel like this developer's done an admirable job in trying to accommodate the neighbors, work with the neighbors, and work with our staff. So, I appreciate that. Those are my comments. Anyone else care?
As far as the gate or the bollards goes, is there not a policy rule, SOP or something that we have that wants these roads like this open?
Yeah, so, if you think about.
We can't have a gate.
Why would they have put a sub-street there in the first place? You know, when they developed the towns of North River? Our subdivision regulations require stubbing out two adjacent properties. They did that during that time, because in the future, if something were to develop here, connectivity would be desired. So, it was thought of when the towns was developed, and now we're here to this point, to where we can actually put it into action.
What are the lot widths? The lots that actually border on this development that are in the Yorkshire area in the towns? What is their width? I can't read it, 'cause it's.
Uh, Mr.?
Ms. Prince, don't hold me to this, but I think the ones that are... So, obviously, the tier lots 37 through 43, those are 60, the proposed lots. And the lots in the towns along Yorkshire are gonna be comparable. I wanna say some of those are 55, but I could be wrong. They're very close.
Any further questions? Or comments? That was a question, I would close questioning, but will, any comments from anybody, or?
Well, one thing, and I didn't get to read all of the emails that were sent, but I did read a couple. There was some question about, you know, the value of the homes, and I guess that's out of our jurisdiction, and I don't guess there's any way. But I know that if I were right next door, I mean, I would, of course, be worried that homes that were gonna be sold for less than what my home was valued in the towns, then that would affect my property value. But I don't know of any way we can address that.
I think the lot sizes are similar, and then probably the square footage of the houses are similar.
Okay.
We know the cost of building has gone up probably since towns were built, so you're probably gonna start out at a pretty good value right there.
And the, I think, the level of architecture is addressed as that.
But you're having an architectural review committee, correct?
I'm sorry?
You're having an architectural review committee?
Yes, sir.
And didn't you say the homes were gonna start out around $500,000?
Mr. Pugh, that was just the note that 68 and Bobby's team put together was 500 to 850,000. But, I mean, y'all have seen many of these, and I mean, I think there's gonna be a bottom category, and then a custom house could be seven figures. I mean, I think, personally, living in this area, I mean, I think those numbers could be on the low side at the end of the day. Just genuinely speaking.
Again, we're past the Q and A session, so it's really comment time and time to take a vote. So, any other comments from the commission? All right. Having heard none. Let's get our... We got three items to cover here, folks. We'll start with annexation, Annex 0125, annexing 57 acres located north of Old Colony and south of Forest Oaks Lane. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Our next will be GPD 0125 Brixton. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved. Next, we have PS 0125 Brixton, consisting of 144 single-family lots.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have one variance request, cul-de-sac length turnaround, engineering has some issues with. I'll begin with Ms. Hornsby.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
All right, Commissioner, moving into our cases to be heard tonight, we have companion case 2211 Bryant Drive Townhomes. This is SDO 125 and S1525. This is your first special district case under the new code. This is replacing the DROD under the old code, as well as a subdivision. This is for 10 townhome units located in the downtown perimeter. I can see here, we're near the old Paul Bryant Vet Clinic. Zooming in, I can see there's that existing townhome development just south of here that this will be part of. I can see its own downtown perimeter in that maroon. For the special district narrative, the applicant is proposing to construct 10 townhome units. There'll be 21 parking spaces located behind the townhomes, as well as an additional three parking spots and a dumpster on the adjacent property with shared access. Additionally, there'll be eight on-street parking spots. For materials, you're looking at brick masonry, cementitious siding, and trim, wood accents, and metal railing. Here is that site plan. You can see here, we're off of 22nd Avenue and Paul Bryant, and just zooming in here, you can see those seven townhomes fronting Paul Bryant and three fronting 22nd, as well as that parking in the rear. Looking at the elevations here, on the left, you can see that existing Harless &amp; Company building, as well as those existing townhomes, and the new construction on the right. Just zooming in there, this is the 22nd Avenue elevation. Moving to the Paul Bryant elevation here. Here's a rendering of those townhomes. And here's a photo of those existing townhomes today. Our architectural review committee did find that this development meets the development standards of the downtown perimeter zoning district. Moving into the subdivision here, we have those 10 lots again, as well as that common space with the parking. No variance requests on this. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Nope. Thank you. Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Al Cabinus of Cabinus Engineering, representing Harless &amp; Company. Jeffrey Harless is here tonight. Leah Alexander, the architect for this project, is also here as well. If you have any questions of her, she did the architecture on the existing, on the existing first phase, basically, that we built several years ago, and we're carrying the same theme and the same style around the corner. So, really, we had a couple of options if I had to orient the two separate townhouse buildings. So, we chose to go with the seven townhomes fronting Bryant Drive. We think it gives a really good streetscape with the Bryant Drive view. More traffic there, more visible there, and then the break in the buildings and the three-unit one. So, on the first phase, we actually did five units, five residential units. They're down here. This is Harless &amp; Company's office. It worked in there real well. Leah came up with the gate design here, and it marries the two uses together, but then they're separated, so it's, it just, it really turned out well. We'll have a similar gate here and a similar gate here, so we'll carry that exact theme that you see on the 21st Avenue streetscape now around the corner there. So, it's a good opportunity to have almost half of a block here, really, that, you know, was being put together as if there were one development. I'm done, if you have any questions. I think I see a question.
I got a question for y'all, just out of curiosity. When we did this approval, I think many years ago it was, that gate, that was for the trash cans, wasn't it? Where are the trash cans now on the existing? How do you handle your trash? Per unit, right? It's cans?
Yeah, I don't know what we did on the first phase, but this phase, we're building a dumpster, you know, right here that will actually serve the entire development, the existing five from the first phase, as well as the new 10.
So, then that, will the valet then go away and get away from the cans and just have that dumpster serve the entire development?
This'll serve everybody.
Okay.
This'll serve everybody.
That's good.
I'll make sure I get with John on that, make sure we get that worked out.
Could you, staff, we see the view on Paul Bryant of these units? Go back to the rendering, or the, there you go.
That's the 22nd Avenue.
Well, that's 22nd, but then to the right, I guess, would be Paul Bryant.
Yeah, that's the corner, so this is the avenue, and then Bryant Drive is out here. So, these are the fronts facing Bryant. These are the fronts facing.
There wasn't any parking on Paul Bryant, right?
So, and there is some existing parking there, we're improving that to current standards. And of course, those parking spaces are public, but they should serve this development. We actually made the parking requirements off-street anyway, so we got more parking than we had to have here. Don't have any variances on this, we made the setbacks, the lot sizes, parking.
Any questions for petitioner? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone care to speak for or against these requests? Okay. Having heard none, we'll close. I think this is a nice addition to Paul Bryant, and it matches up nicely with what they previously had built there, so I think it's nice for.
It would've been a lot easier sales if you dropped the picture of what was there before.
Yeah. 100%. All right. Any other comments from the commission? Having heard none. Commission, before us, we have a companion case, 2211 Paul Bryant Drive Townhomes. We've got SD 0125, the construction of 10 townhomes. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion approved.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes. Ms. Hornsby, S1525, 2211 Paul Bryant Drive Townhomes. Do I have a motion and a second? No variance request.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
All right. Next up is a preliminary plat. This is S1625, re-survey of Tuscaloosa Heights, being a re-survey of a portion of lots 1 through 3, 5, and all of lots 6 through 12, Block B, and lots 1 through 6, Block C, and vacate right-of-way. This is consisting of three lots on approximately 2.56 acres, located at 1241 McFarland Boulevard East, and 900 through 914 13th Street East, Council District 5. You can see right here, we're across from the Whataburger and Fresh Market. Zooming in on those properties today, you can see there's an existing structure. Moving into the plat, you can see they're proposing three lots, one here, one there, and one there. Moving into that plat without contours. And just zooming in here, they are dedicating full right-of-way on that first lot on the west. The two lots on the right will not have that full right-of-way dedicated. And with that, of course, being a variance request, we did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
To garner all the variance requests, that's a little tricky, but give us your best information.
So, you know, we fully support full right-of-way dedication with the plat for the entire frontage along 13th. I think we're gonna need it in the future, at least, when those lots develop. I can see the need for maybe continuing the right turn lane or additional turn lane in that westbound direction, and those improvements would push the sidewalk out of the right-of-way as it's proposed to you tonight.
Mike, in the past, when we waived right-of-way, there's been a reason in the way this used with a lot of the reasons?
Not really. I don't know if it's got anything to do with just timing. Normally, you know, it's dedicated the full width of the proposed lots. Here, we're getting a dedication kind of of the western half, and no dedication or a partial dedication on the eastern portion.
Let's hear from the engineer on this petition case. So, let's have the petitioner come forward.
Mike, do we have, Mike, do we have right-of-way on, as it is now, lots 1, 2, or 3? Or is it all three lots that we have any issues with? Or where are the problems?
So, the lot 1, the one on the corner, they're showing the appropriate right-of-way dedication based on the street classification and what our subdivision regulations state.
Lot 1's good.
Yes, sir. It's lot 2A and...
3A.
3A, where they're not showing the full dedication of 40 feet from the center line.
All right. Why, you wanna try to explain yourself?
Well, I'm Michael McGuire with GSA, and I was gonna answer any general questions that y'all might have on the subdivision itself. And Jason Walker's here. He's got a lot more history on the right-of-way, so if there's any question with right-of-way, I was gonna let.
I think that's the most important issue we got in front of us right now, so. Mr. Walker? Mr. Walker, we'd like you to join us.
Mike, can I ask you one more question before we start? The lot, before we get to 3A, it's not even on this drawing here, but the lot to the right of 3A, do we have right-of-way dedication on that? Is it just, I thought it was my understanding that 3A and 2A were the only two we had issues with?
The way the plat's presented, 2A and 3A are the only ones that are not dedicating the required right-of-way. So, Mr. Walker's fixing to discuss maybe the reasoning or the request to not fully dedicate it this time. I think we need to hear what he has to say.
My question is, the lot before we get to this one, the two lots to the east?
There's been full dedication to the lots to the east, yes, there has been.
Back up, back up a step, right?
That's right. It's not shown on this plat, but, oh, what's the name of that?
But we can see it in the area.
Mike, can you go to that area? The two businesses to the right have right-of-way dedication?
Right there, they have not.
And the next?
This area? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. Well...
That's part of that.
The two existing businesses to the right.
To the right of the yellow X.
Further.
Those have not, but this development did.
That development, yeah.
That development did.
Okay, okay. All right. Mr. Walker.
Okay. Jason Walker with TTL and 289 Rice Mine Road Northeast, representing Capital Growth Buckhalter. Again, there's a few parties, ultimately, that doesn't necessarily matter, in what's pending for an economic development project on this lot 1A, and so that's where the focus is. And as a result, obviously, the rest of this property owned by the Buckhalters is now kind of part of it, is they're trying to consolidate the property just all at once while they're doing it. But the immediately pending action would be on 1A, but obviously, once this passed approval, if it did, for the overall plat, then there's hopefully things in the works that would come to 2A and 3A, but that's why we're kind of advancing it to this point. You know, it's unique, really, in terms of existing right-of-way, and it's hard to see on the drawing, but some, kind of the hatched area actually comes out into the improved turn lanes on 13th Street, which apparently, when the project was done, because the parking lot was set back, that turn lane was added by DOT from McFarland Boulevard without purchasing the right-of-way, but it was put in, and so this will resolve that issue. It also sets the right-of-way back far enough to get the proposed sidewalk between that existing curb within a public right-of-way, which, which you won't, is near necessity, if not some type of easement or something. So, if we come back and we talk about 2A and 3A, we are showing a proposed sidewalk that would be constructed as part of the improvements to go ahead and advance. What we're requesting is going to be a setback, and it's kind of hard to see on the, I'll try to write this back marker, but, two foot off the back of the proposed curb, which would give six feet, a five-foot sidewalk, and then a two-foot buffer from the back of the sidewalk, which is 13 total feet. That's what we would request, request approval of, subject to everything else within this plat, but the variance being to only provide right-of-way to a line that is two foot behind that proposed sidewalk line. You know, there's, obviously, if you look down the right-of-way, this is as much about future setbacks as it is about right-of-way, because wherever the right-of-way goes, that's where the setbacks go. So, the 20-foot setback, you not only lose the developable property, which can be parking and things associated with future development, but the buildings themselves get pushed back, and then you're having less size of a development, or it can be the difference in something happening or not happening because you're losing that property. So, just like the adjoining property, you can see the corner of the building there, just on the edge of the survey, you know, right here, and you can see where this 20-foot setback is, and that's just compared to what would have been a 10-foot right-of-way dedication. So, if 13th Street were to be widened at some point, the city, or who, you know, in this case, almost definitely the city, would acquire additional property. The building would stay, it would just be grandfathered in because of its setback and be suitably located. Or they would actually buy the building, you know, it could get into an extensive project. There's massive utilities in this corridor, overhead, there's the underground, there, it's a lot, and this goes back to right after the tornado, when there's probably been 20 versions of what could have happened on the project. So, yeah, there's a chance it could develop, but there is no planned capital improvement by the city. There's no established alignment or plan and profile from any kind of, you know, legal look at this in terms of dedicating right-of-way, but the Buckhalters are willing to dedicate that right-of-way to resolve the sidewalk, get that through there, and let it go forward.
So, I have a question for the developer. So, the only variance you're asking for is the right-of-way. You're going to still do the sidewalks?
Correct.
That's, that's being done by the developers?
Right.
And the sidewalk is, according to the city standards, like that's still in the right-of-way, like it needs to be? Okay.
It would be, but Mr. Gardner can correct me if I'm wrong. If right-of-way was dedicated, they wouldn't have to jog south with that sidewalk to keep it in the right-of-way, and so in the future, if these are developed, and they go through this, they're probably not going to have to go through a subdivision process, they, the sidewalk would have to be torn up completely in order to, you know, to expand the right-of-way or anything like that, that would be necessary.
I mean, if we're going to ever develop 2A and 3A, then we're going to ask for the right-of-way dedication then, correct?
If they have to subdivide, but they might not have to subdivide.
Yeah, if this plat, if this plat was approved, we wouldn't have to change the lot lines, so...
So, I guess, back to my original question of mine, is there a reason, is there, is there a reason why not to dedicate the right-of-way? I didn't hear a good reason on 2A and 3A.
I'm sorry, I thought you were asking Mike the question.
Well, I did ask Mike, and I'm asking you.
Okay, sorry, what's the question again?
What's the reason that you don't want to dedicate the right-of-way? I heard it, I heard it, I heard a lot.
Yeah, it limits the, I mean, we don't know in what manner until it happens. It limits the potential development by whatever that 10 feet could be in this very tight urban area. For example, the project that's going on 1A, there's probably been 10 to 12 site plans just trying to figure out how to squeeze that, so when that starts happening, and honestly, it ultimately is a taking.
So, we're talking for 10 feet, right? We're talking 10 feet?
Yeah.
Jason, I get that, and I, here's, here's my problem with us doing that. Man, it sets a heck of a precedent. And, and if, 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 if there's a, if there is a, if there's a reason, if there's a whole-scale reason out there, it's, it's, the utilities are too monumentous, if there's too many gas lines in the way, if there's just something that can't be, and I can, I can see that, but if it, if it's no reason other than we just don't want to, for future, maybe we get a project that needs that extra 10 feet, and this one was, this one barely fit on this one, well, sorry, maybe it just doesn't work.
Yeah, and I understand, I understand for sure that perspective, and it's kind of like, if you can get it, take it. But the problem with the precedent really is, there's no pending project, and it's, I'm not saying what hasn't been done in the past has been done, but it's taking that property with no plans necessarily for a project, so...
I don't think it's about taking. I think it's about, Mr. Harris said it's precedence for one, and two, it's just the look of it, I mean, I feel of it.
You said exactly what I wanted you to say, but we're just looking at it different.
Right.
You're talking about why, huh?
So, does the city have plans to widen the road?
Not at this time, no.
What about, they could ask, if you worry about the 10 feet, I mean, your, your property line in the back's up against the railroad tracks.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, so I, if you came and said, for, I need a 10 feet from a setback variance, I might be more inclined to that as opposed to, I mean, if you're talking about the 10, if it's about the 10 feet?
Yeah, it is about 10 feet.
I'd look at that a lot faster than I would anything else.
So, from a setback perspective, general commercial, this is what general, this is in general commercial now, front setback is the average alignment of existing buildings within 200 feet on either side of the subject building and within the same block. So, essentially, they can line it up with adjacent buildings within 200 feet. So, there's really no minimum setback, essentially.
There you go, then.
It's kind of fluid in regards to what the adjacent property does.
Well, it looks like the, unless that hashback, I mean, it says 20 feet, but it's sure not this, well, well, it's 20 feet from the lot line, I'm sorry, I see now the little jagged place. And I, I, I don't understand the hash marks, I'm so sorry.
Well, that, that is confusing, because the, that's not the existing right-of-way line. The existing right-of-way line is that lightly dashed line underneath pretty much where the proposed sidewalk is. The hatched area is what would be proposed for a, really, a fallback position of a 10-foot of the 20 proposed for right-of-way dedication. So, there's really three possible lines. There's one that parallels the proposed sidewalk, there's this 10-foot right-of-way dedication, and then if you went with a full 20, it would push it even further back than, than it's shown on the plat.
Jason, I agree with you, this drawing gives confusion, given the fact that you've got, I'm looking at your layer of proposed turn-in lanes per preliminary engineering drawing. Is that, is that, and how that sidewalk, and assuming that's the new proposed sidewalk location, is meandering through that, I'm trying to understand how your turning lane worked there with that sidewalk being right at the corner of the turn-in.
Yeah, and I think that was...
Is it behind curbs?
Yeah. Well, there's, there were staff concerns, I think, at one point about the accesses relative to the plat, so those red lines, I think, kind of codified where the proposed accesses would be. One would be maintain the right-in, right-out, but where it's shown in red, and, yeah, there'd be ADA crossings for sidewalks, and then the second one would be a single access for lots 2A and 3A where this other one is shown in red.
Are there sidewalks to the east of lot 3A? I mean, I'm sure, I travel this road often, going from my house to Target and Aldi.
Can you show that, Zach? Yeah, the, okay.
But, and I'm pretty sure that where the apartments start, even on that side, I'm, I'm thinking there's sidewalks at some point, like where the apartments start.
Probably by the apartments, yeah.
Yeah.
But beyond that.
You're asking, there's...
I mean, y'all are going to kill me when I say this, but I'd almost rather have dedicated right-of-way than sidewalks built, if they're not going to connect with anything. But, and I know we, you know, like to have sidewalks, and especially in areas like this where all the people in those apartments would, you know, possibly walk to whatever's going to be built on lot 1A.
Mr. Walker's new...
And again, if you build a sidewalk, and then whoever develops 2A and 3A have to tear it up, or the city tears it up if they're going to improve that street.
So, so does, are we going to lose that row of parking on 1A that's south?
Well, it'll be, it'll be totally redone, the site will be, so...
But are we still going to have that row of parking?
No, it'll, it'll go, that particular row of parking will go away, and there may be some other parking, but it will be shifted back off of what the proposed right-of-way is and so forth. And, you know, it's going to be landscape ordinance and everything else.
So, y'all are talking about, or the city would have to come in and build the road wider, right, and you're saying that it's a busy street? And did you say that one of the lots didn't, didn't give the right-of-way, so you'd have to buy that lot, is that what you...
Well, no, as part of lot 1A, that right, it will resolve that issue where the actual, the right-of-way is actually showing up in the street turn lane.
But back here, behind 3A, I don't know if it's 4A or some, you're saying that, that building didn't, they didn't give the right-of-way on that?
No, it hasn't, it hasn't been subdivided in recent years, so they wouldn't have...
So, it hadn't had anything, so tornado didn't get it?
Well, if it did, they'd improve the building, they didn't have to re-survey it, they just redid the improvements on the lot as it was.
I, I think Ms. Prince's suggestions and thoughts make, make a lot of sense to me, especially if there's going to be three cuts in that road to enter the property. I don't know that she really wants sidewalk connectivity over there.
But it also would depend upon what 1A's going to be.
True, but I mean, you've got it...
And if, you've got a lot of apartments in there, and there could be a lot of people walking over there, and where are they going to, there'd be no walkway if they need to get across, that's where I, that's where I see maybe the issue with the, having a need for a sidewalk.
Well, you don't think the sidewalk on the south side is sufficient for that?
I still think...
Not if 2A is...
If somebody from the south's going to cross the street to the north, where are they going to, where are they going to walk? They're going, they'll cross everywhere and anywhere.
The McFarland Crossing, though, if you go back out, is on the south side of that property, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so...
If you're a university student and you live in those apartments, you're going to cross the first place you come to.
Right.
Do we want to encourage them?
They're not going to walk our way down to that red light to cross. There's a lot of...
Yeah, and on the south, the north side of 13, too, you've got some down the street.
You don't, you don't have a...
So, was Ms. Prince saying, because if we can, if we can do without the sidewalks, I like sidewalks, but if we can do without the sidewalks to not have to take the right-of-way, is that what you were saying, Ms. Prince?
Well, yeah.
Let's swap one for the other?
You know, look, I, I mean, I'm not an engineer or a planner or anything like that, but it just sounds like there may be a lot of issues down the road if we don't get right-of-way dedicated, but...
Yeah, let me go ahead and read this.
The authority to reserve and ask dedication of right-of-way is a limited power, and it's limited to where the subdivision is the cause for the need for the additional right-of-way, and when it's to be reserved for a future improvement someday, then we're more likely to have to pay for that property as a condemn.
It's much more the sidewalks than utilities.
Yeah, that's the call, that's caused by the subdivision to add that, but for a future widening of the roadway, some years in the future, that's more of condemnation.
You're saying that it could be considered that?
Yes, it could be argued that it's a taking.
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand. You said it could be argued?
It could be argued that it's a taking, because the, there is no planned project for widening 13th Street East, and it may happen, it may not happen, it may be 20 years, and in those cases, you really call it a taking at that point.
Okay.
Just, it would be just a matter of if it does or doesn't do it at that point.
Yeah, you condemn it, or else it's, maybe something develops out, and it's not available.
Is everybody satisfied or have more questions for petitioner or staff?
So, that means that we could give a variance on the right-of-way?
Yeah, probably.
Okay. Put in a simple charge.
All right, everybody good? Anyone care to speak for or against? We're going to ask that question. I'll strike. All right, so...
So, I'm confused.
All right.
So, how do we vote on no variance, or what are we voting on?
There are no variances.
I mean, well, what...
They're requesting a variance from dedicating right-of-way, so if you are okay with that, you would just vote?
Oh, yes.
Yes, as presented.
All right.
I need some guidance from the developer.
I'm about to say...
Basically, what I understand, Jimbo, correct me if I'm, this is what I understand, if we do, if we vote and do not approve the variance, then it could be considered a taking for these two blocks.
Yes, and Mike mentioned if it's, if it's, if it's for the purpose of a right-in, right-out turn lane, that kind of thing, that's appropriate, because it's needed immediately. Because it's needed immediately caused by the subdivision. Reserve for future use is where you have your problems.
Well, I, I don't, my personal opinion, I don't like it. I think it's ugly. I'd like to see it changed, but basically, what I'm told, you've got a right, a right turn lane there that's works with, with the development, so I don't know if it begins.
I will say to keep in mind, too, that, you know, if, if y'all are leaning towards not approving the variance, we wanna make sure that we kind of know that a little bit, because that's gonna affect the whole denial of the subdivision. And they're trying to move forward, you know, of course, with their, with this, uh, number one, so. I just kind of feel that out so that the petitioner can make a determination.
This, this is a, this is kind of a confusing vote for us.
Yeah.
I think we're all a little bit like, what?
Well, I don't understand why they had to ask for a variance then, if you're saying, you know, it would, it would be construed as a taking if we were, if we said they couldn't have the variance, because we want, like every other subdivision almost that comes up here, they, they do dedicate right-of-way along the whole part of their subdivision. Have, have we just never had anything like this before? I mean, don't we have?
Um, most have volunteered the right-of-way.
There's a matter of the city's thought about it?
You know, if there's a plan on the books, and it's in the works, there's an argument, you can make them go ahead and dedicate.
What? Can we vote on the matter as it is presented to us with the condition that the developer work satisfy the city engineer through the LDP process?
Yes, and then one other point you could argue is if one has dedicated, and the two projects together are what created the need for a wider street, you could argue that the subdivision itself was the cause. It's just something that you have to be aware of in, in how you present, it could be argued, taking.
Well, I'm not arguing that it's a taking, I'm arguing that we, we give Mike the authority to, the city engineer to approve the LDP that's that is in accordance with the codes and the state.
I would think that more than likely what would be developed on three A and two A would, would almost need that right-turn lane extended farther to the east. We want to main, we want the customers or whatever to get out of the travelway, to slow down and turn into these businesses, and keep the flow of traffic on Thirteenth headed easterly, westerly.
Well, Mike, let me ask you this, if we, if we subdivided, and they do not have to come back for us, but they will have to come back for you on the LDP?
That's right, and I guess what I'm saying is, when they propose those improvements on the land development permit, I believe it's gonna push that sidewalk north outside of the, the, the ask of the right-of-way dedication tonight. And at that point, we would request right-of-way dedication for approval of the LDP.
And I think at that time, they would be removing that sidewalk, dedicating the right-of-way, which is what Mike requested.
That's what I think.
So, we either, we can put it on you.
As far as someone don't, we don't do it on the front end, we're, we're creating a lot of backend issues.
My only concern is it's a bounce, it's a take.
Zach, I'm a little confused about all of this. Go back to what we were originally voting on, and, and not with any changes that they want. We've got lot one, two, and three. What do they want done on, what, what are we voting on, I'm asking?
You're removing a few lot lines, and you're creating three
Two and three?
Yeah, so there's, they're very faint.
Why don't we just vote on, vote lot on one, and when they come back to develop two and three, we can address this issue about right-of-way and stuff, if it's not
He didn't ask the city, he asked the boss.
Yeah.
Yeah, why aren't we doing two and three anyway if they're not gonna build anything yet?
I think from what I've heard, the clearest path would be, you know, looking at this as presented with maybe the condition that they work with OCE on lots two and three, as that was the way that y'all were leaning. Just to summarize kind of everything that's been talked about.
So legally and engineering, staff-wise, you're okay with us putting a somewhat of a condition on there at the time of lots two A and three A being developed, that they come in and meet with you about the LDP process to potentially get the right-of-way dedication we need? That, you know, layman's term, what we want?
I think you used the term potentially is, is correct. It's the correct statement. We don't know what's gonna be proposed on lot two A and three A. We don't know what kind of traffic generator they're gonna be. Uh, so to, to say here publicly that it's gonna require that right-turn lane to be extended, may or may not be true. A traffic study uh, will determine that.
I mean, I, I'm fine with that. I think someone said it's gonna look funny, but y'all are okay looking funny, and with those conditions in there, then so be it. Good with that?
Yeah.
All right, here's a motion. We have, all right, we got, uh, we gotta make them, that motion on where, on S seventeen or sixteen, or both? We got, we got two
Just got S sixteen.
Sorry, sixteen, all right. All right. Commission before us have S sixteen twenty-five, this is a resurvey of Tuscaloosa Heights, uh, with the condition that at the time of potential redevelopment of lot, or development of two A and lots three A, that petitioner will work with our city engineer, our legal department, and our planning department to address the right-of-way dedication at that time, depending upon the proposed use. Current variant. With current variance right-of-way dedication, okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Horsby?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
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 Motion to, motion approved.
All right, next up, we have another preliminary plat, that is S seventeen twenty-five, re-survey of lots five and six, Cherokee Estates, section one. This is a reconfiguration of two lots on approximately eight point four-two acres located at one-two-two-seven-three Cherokee Drive. This is outside city limits. You can see we're north here on forty-three, and looking at that property today, there is a remnant lot line, uh, running through this property that you can see here, so this is a reconfiguration of two lots. Uh, this is a plat with contours, without, um, and moving into our variance requests here, we did receive one public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Uh, Mike calling those for variance request.
No issues.
Thank you. Petitioner? Keep it simple.
Commission again, Jimmy Duncan, Duncan Coker Associates here tonight representing Wendy Shelby for this request, uh, two variance requests, cap sewers, and lot configuration.
Any questions for a petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none, commission for us, we have S seventeen twenty-five, re-survey of lots five and six, Cherokee Estates, section one, with two variance requests. Engineering has issues with. Do you have a motion in a second?
Motion.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, moving on, we have a rezoning request, that is Z oh-six-twenty-five, Tony L. Taylor, petitions for petitions, excuse me, to rezone approximately zero point five acres located at sixty-seven-hundred-thirty-first Street from SFR four to S, excuse me, again, SFR two to SFR four. This is Council District one. You can see here, we're just east of Sanders Ferry Road on Thirty-first Street. You can see the property today is SFR two, it's near some neighborhood commercial and SFR three. Uh, looking at that property today, there is a structure shown in the aerial, uh, but that lot is vacant, um, as you can see here. Uh, for the petition, the applicant is requesting to rezone from SFR two to SFR four to allow for the construction of a duplex. Here's that site plan here, you can see those duplex units. Uh, zooming in, uh, you can see the lot is approximately a hundred and forty-three or so by a hundred and seventy-three. You can see those two driveways, as well as that layout inside. Uh, it's about sixteen to seventeen feet set back on the sides. Uh, looking at that floor plan here, you can see, uh, multiple bedrooms, uh, standard, uh, house layout here. Uh, here's a rendering of what that could look like, uh, as well as exterior elevations. Uh, from twenty-twenty-one framework, uh, this zoning request does conform with the plan, um, as this residential, excuse me, suburban residential does allow some small-scale attached dwellings. And you can see that here is identified as suburban residential. Uh, for our permitted uses in SFR four, we have detached, single-family, the townhome, um, and duplexes permitted in this zone. And, uh, one more page here, uh, we did receive nine signatures in opposition to this request. Do you have any questions for staff?
Thank you. Petitioner?
How we doing? All right, first of all, I would like to thank the, um, the, uh, Tuscaloosa Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission for allowing me to come before
Name and address for the record.
I'm sorry. My name is Tony Taylor. Uh, I'm a lifelong, um, resident of Tuscaloosa, but, um, I live in
What is your address?
Sir?
What is your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, um, I live in, um, Evaporaiso, Indiana.
Indiana.
Yeah, but you know, I plan on
What is your street address?
Um, I really forgot.
Where do you live?
We just need that for the record, it's not just a
I'm sorry.
This isn't a trick, it's just
I, I mainly use my post office box, but anyway, I, I live at, uh, one-five-six, uh, Mayfield Avenue, Apartment D, and that's in Evaporaiso, Indiana. It's a town of probably about approximately like thirteen to fourteen thousand, uh, people. Uh, it's progressive city, and like I said, um, I grew up here in Tuscaloosa. I finished Central High School way back when, and, um, so, anyway, I, uh, first of all, I would like to thank the Commission again, also, I'd like to thank Mr. Woodson, uh, and, and Ms., uh, hold on, and, and Ms., uh, Corn. Anyway, like I said, um, I still would like to just give kudos to your staff, because basically, I've been working in, uh, public service for over thirty years, and basically, I've never seen a staff to be so efficient and prompt. Uh, there's never been a time that I didn't call, uh, Mr. Woodfin, I'm, I'm, Mr. Woods, Mr. Woodson, and Ms., uh, Corn. They called me within the same day, within like thirty, thirty minutes or maybe one
We're, we're not gonna give them a raise, okay?
But, but, but anyway, I'm the type of person that I don't
Can we do that?
I believe in giving a person that do. Anyway, so.
They're good people.
I'm here, so I'm here to answer your question. But anyway, like I said, uh, basically, I purchased the property from the city, and basically, um, I'm an innovative-minded person that's like change, and, um, it, it's the, uh, duplex is something that me and my brother, 'cause I love L. Taylor, designed, and also I had a, uh, architecture out of Birmingham who helped me design the place, and, uh, I'm just a late person, so, a lot of things I don't know.
So, Mr. Taylor's staff, we, we, when we looked at this and, um, Chair Vice Chair, there was some, some concern about, um, rezoning this because of current, current single-family residents, but I think the, the, the gist that we discussed was the improvements and the potential redeveloping this kind of overrode the concern about it being single-family. We thought the project was very nice-looking and
Yes.
fit within the neighborhood, as long as we didn't see any opposition. Uh, apparently, we haven't had any opposition, so I'm, I'm, I think it's a good project for the area.
We did
We did have
There has, there has been some, well, here's the thing, though, it's
Does it mean you're moving back?
Well
I plan to.
Here's, here's the thing I, I see here, I was looking at these, and people just are against it. Most people are against anything that, that's near them. I guess the question I'd have would be, one, why would they be opposed without any reason, just they don't want anything changed? However, like Mr. Harrison said, you know, we make decisions based on, we, we think is best for the community.
Right.
And we, we also try to look out for those neighbors now.
Right.
Have you had any conversations with any of the neighbors or anybody that, any of these folks that don't want it?
Well, I'm the petitioner, so I expect you to answer me, not me, but anyway. Could you, are you privileged to give me the, the names?
Well, I mean, I, I don't wanna do that for the rec, it's in the record, I can give them to you, but like I said, there's, the thing is, they, they, they didn't say anything in the, in the, they just said, I'm against it.
We don't know why they're
We don't know why they're against it, I mean.
Well, well, um, basically, I was born in that community, and I stayed there till like I was five years old, and the church that's behind the lot, well, I can't say I remember it anyway, I grew up in that church. Anyway, so, the, the adversity people that may be on that list, um, there may be some people opposing due to the fact, you know, I don't wanna stick, throw stones and be contentious, but anyway. Uh, the people that may be opposing are some people, family members that wanted that lot. And basically, I purchased the lot from the city, um, outright, just from the city, and basically, um, I just believe in change and, and a progressive Tuscaloosa, and basically, I wanna be a part of the progressive of Tuscaloosa, of doing something different, uh, of, of, of building a duplex.
Tell you what, I'm, I'm gonna ask somebody, is there anybody here that's on this list, or anybody that's, wants to speak up against this petition request? Okay, no set. I, I'm not trying to cut you off, but I don't think we're gonna be swayed by somebody just says no.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I, I, we wanna hear a reason why you wouldn't want something in it, and based on what we've seen so far, we think it's an improvement.
And, and especially since people are just often confused
Sure, they see
about what's going in there and what we're doing, uh, the technicalities of it, so if, yeah, I, I would say, this looks nice to me.
Yeah, it does.
Why they would
So, I, I think you're in a good spot. Let me save you, let me save you some headaches here. Anyone want, have any questions for this petitioner? Okay, have a seat, sir. All right, no one has cared to speak for or against this petition? Commissioners for us, we have Mr. Z zero-six-twenty-five, Mr. Taylor, petition to rezone half acre from SFR two to SFR four. Do you have a motion in a second?
Motion. Second.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion approved. Mr. Taylor, you're good to go.
Welcome out.
You can progress away.
All right, we're moving on to our next rezoning request, that is Z oh-seven-twenty-five. Austin Markham, petitions to rezone approximately zero point three acres located at twenty-five oh-one Twelfth Avenue East. Uh, this is from SFR two to NC, Council District six. You can see we're just south of Snow Hinton Park here. Uh, zooming in on that property today is SFR two, is near some open space, multifamily residential and neighborhood commercial. Uh, you can see that property today is vacant, and looking just, this is a street view of what the property looks like today. Uh, the petition is to rezone from SFR two to NC to allow for a commercial development of an office. As we get into the plans here, this may start to look familiar, this did come before you previously. I can see that buildable area here, and moving into that site plan with the proposed office space. Uh, just zooming in here on those parking requirements, uh, three per one thousand square feet in this zoning, uh, district, or excuse me, with this use. Um, you can see here, this is just a rendering from above, as well as from the street elevation, and from the rear. Uh, here are some proposed materials, we have aluminum awning, uh, hardy products, um, Here are some proposed materials. We have aluminum awning, hardy products, et cetera. And here are just some other NC properties nearby that the petitioner submitted with their application. From our 2021 framework comprehensive plan, this zoning request does not conform to this plan. This area is identified as suburban residential. You can see that identified here. Moving into our permitted uses here, you can see the highlighted column for neighborhood commercial moving through here. We did not receive any public comment on this request, or excuse me, I think we may have. I'll double check when I get back to the desk here, but do you have any questions for staff?
We have some here, yeah. I got one here. Petitioner.
Hello, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Albert Gonzalez, Fort Crestline Drive, Tuscaloosa. So as she mentioned, on October 21st of last year, we presented this to the commission and everything seemed to be going great except when we got to the point with what was the building going to look like and what materials were going to be used. So we went back to the drawing board and we gave it a look and then we gave you some materials.
Commission, I do apologize. We received two public comments of concern regarding this request. I just wanted to make sure that was in the record.
Any questions?
Do we have a render, I mean, I know we have a plat, but you said materials and.
Yes, the last rendering, the last slide that we provided, that shows all the materials. Would be a brick base, would be hardy siding and asphalt shingles blending with the, with the neighborhood. Kind of gave it that residential scale. Our first proposal was kind of two stories and.
Go back to the parking configuration, will you? Zach, we would talk, what was the conversation we had in planning Chair Vice Chair about the parking in this area in the back?
Yeah, so initially, they had some parking right here.
Yeah.
That was backing into the street and we told them that we weren't okay with that, so they removed it. They do meet the required parking.
Parking will be behind in that area there. Nope, no street park.
Right.
Can you show the area where it is again? Now, I want to think originally you had two stories, didn't you?
Yes. And the concern was.
That was one of the concerns. They were behind you, looking down onto the residential pieces of this.
Is this, is this, what is this office going to use?
So we have strong interest from an interior designer. She wants to use that space. So it's going to be a commercial office with office hours eight to five more or less, so, single-use occupant, 1,600 square feet, so it's going to be small.
So, so Dana was just pointing out, and I was wondering, what is this white-looking sidewalk? Is that a sidewalk? This, this thing that's going, it kind of looks like a snake?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, yeah, that's a sidewalk. That was a large project for, I think, flooding or something like that in this area.
That's not, that's not, that's not the, what do you call it, the city wall?
It could be a portion of it, but no, it connects into the city walk, yeah.
It's a city park.
Yeah.
On down to the left, Mr. Rumsey, there's a red light that takes you across to Snow Hinton Park.
Okay. And so where this lot is, is part of the city plan? Does it show that this is owned for this?
So it does not meet framework. Framework shows this as suburban residential, I believe. Uh, which is predominantly, you know, single-family homes.
This is the same kind of conversation we had about Forest Lake and 15th Street.
It's similar.
To me, we started getting into, if this was a, if, that was a, Harrow Grove was a two-lane road, it felt more residential. I'd be, I'd be like, no, I don't know about this. But we're seeing more of these 15th Streets of the world, Jharrows are three and four lanes. But I don't think anybody's going to live on a corner like that. I mean, where's your dog going to play? Where are your kids going to play? I mean, Forest Lake wouldn't like to hear that, but it seems like in certain of these areas that commercial kind of buffers the residential in a way from the, from the amount of traffic.
Well, they got Starbucks going in Forest Lake.
Oh, I'm near, yeah.
Well, as I recall, that was really our concern was, you know, we agreed that it was not a good project for a single-family home development. And when you look at it, especially on the ground, but we were, the neighbors were very concerned about.
At height, they were.
And what kind of business it was.
Right.
In an eight-to-five interior decoration business.
1,600 square feet in that lot space. You can do a lot in there.
One story.
Yeah.
If I may, we did walk the neighborhood on Thursday and we did get some feedback from a lot of the residences there. We went around three o'clock, so most, most people were working. But we did talk to the adjacent property on one, El Myra, her name is Crystal, and she has a family. And her concern was that the safety issues of her children playing on that lot and the cars and also the noise from the second, the two-story building across from her. So she was in favor of this, especially when we told her that we would put a buffer for safety and for sound. And then across the street, we spoke with her as well and she was in favor. And she signed the petition, which I handed it over today to the city.
Any other questions for petitioner? Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? All right, having heard none, commission before us, we have Z-0725, Mr. Mark, petitioned rezone the 0.3 acres at 2501 12th Avenue SFR two to NC. Do you have a motion and a second?
Motion approved.
Second.
Ms. Horsby?
Yes. Yes.
I was going to give a reason why, why I couldn't support this before we voted, and I will if, if you don't mind. And the only reason I'm, I don't, I'm like you, I don't know why anybody would live on Harrow Grove Road, four-lane traffic. But I have issues with businesses and interests of neighborhoods and trying to preserve the neighborhoods as much as possible. But I wouldn't have a house there if you gave it to me, but I'm going to vote no.
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 Yes.
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 So it, yeah, it goes with a recommending vote.
Yeah. You got a positive recommendation, go to City Council. Not home yet, though.
All right, commission, moving into other business in our last petition tonight, we have SD-0225. This is a construction of a seven-story condominium hotel with 104 hotel keys, approximately 32,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial space and underground parking located at 2134 Street, Zone D, Council District one. You can see we're right behind Taco Mama and Velocity here. You see that property today is vacant. You can see that zoning here. It is Zone D for downtown. Getting into our special district narrative here, this may look familiar. This request has come to you previously. The applicant is proposing to construct a seven-story condominium hotel with, again, 104 hotel keys of that ground-floor commercial space. There's a restaurant, club, and event space. Parking will be located underground. We have 126 parking spaces provided. For materials, we have masonry, metal storefront glazing, and metal panels. Looking at the site plan here, and as we look at this, this is where you may start to see some changes. This came to you in 2022 under the previous code, so you'll see some changes just adapting to our new code that we have adopted. So zooming in here, you can see we have a dumpster to the north as well as that entry point for the underground parking. Towards the south, you can see that hotel pool on the second story there as well as some on-street parking that's provided. Moving into our elevations here, we have the south elevation, east, you can see that access for the parking, north and west. Starting at the bottom floor and moving up, we have our parking level two here. You can see we do require nine-by-20-foot stalls now under the new code, which are labeled here. Moving into that first floor, you can see those commercial spaces and lobby identified. Moving to the second floor, you start to see those rooms popping up here. Floors three through six, you can see having those room arrangements here in Level seven. Here's just an example of one of the floor plans that were included in the packet. Some interior concepts that were submitted by the applicant and the ground floor here. Here's some renderings. From that side again, you can see the parking access as well as that pool on the second floor. Our architectural review committee did find that this development meets the standards for downtown. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
So for the record, this is basically, we're just bringing to the new standards. Seen it before, the clock ran out.
We don't have to vote on it.
We do have to vote on it, but it's, it's, we've already voted on it. It passed, I guess, probably unanimously back in '22.
Right.
The clock just.
I move after someone comes 10 times, puts a charge of $10,000.
I think Mr. P would agree with you on that.
Yes, that, that summarizes it well.
Petitioner, want to come say a few words and come, give us your name and address of the record in case somebody does have a question for you.
And I threw all the way out here, so might as well, so. David Vialli with alum and from Bellevue, Washington, and ready to get going, so.
Okay.
Excited about it. Yeah.
So you ready to break ground?
Yep.
All right. Any questions for petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against?
He flew out from Oregon. You got to ask him something.
Washington.
Oh, Washington.
Seattle. I came to get my coach back, so let's go.
I don't have anything. I'm not going to waste your time. Anybody else? All right, Mr. Harrison's going to recuse himself. Commission before us, we have SD-0225, the construction of the seven-story condo hotel. Do you have a motion and a second?
Motion.
I get it.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved. Start breaking ground.
All right, thank you all.
All right, anything else, staff? We're good.